Mr. Mark. Shannon, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you. It says live on YouTube.
Yeah, he's ready.
All right, thank you very much. All right. So at this point, I'd like to open up the regular city council. Well, before I do that, the, we have nothing to report out on the study session. So I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the study session. So is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, by, I believe it's Alejandra Avila. At this point, we're going to take roll call. So I will have the city treasurer call out the names.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
He's out.
Mayor Hernandez.
Present.
Yes. All right. So at this point.
By the way, we also have Marie Contreras and on the phone as well.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So at this point, there's, there's been a motion to, to adjourn the study session and it was seconded by, by Alejandra Avila. And at this point, they were, they will move with no objections. We also want to acknowledge that we have our city treasurer, Miss Maria Contreras on the line. All right. So at this point, I will now go ahead and open up the agenda for the Ballin Park City Council Regular Meeting. Today is May 6th, 2020, and the time is seven, 7:03. So I will go ahead and ask, we're going to do the flag salute. So at this point, since I'm at the dice here, we're going to go ahead and do the of pledge of allegiance. One more. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, and one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Alrighty. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, I will give the mic over to a city treasurer, Ms. Jean M. Ayala, as she takes roll call.
City clerk.
Oh, city clerk, excuse me.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
He's absent.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Yes, and also our city treasurer, Maria Contreras. Present and a city clerk. At this point, I will go ahead and entertain, entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hernandez. At this point, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Present.
To excuse Councilmember Pacheco.
Yes, that's correct.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez.
Yes.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Yes. Okay. So the motion passes four zero to excuse Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. All right. So at this point, we, I believe we have a couple of, closing on behalf of of a couple of residents of the city of Ballin Park. And I will read off a couple from Ballin Park. So the first one that I have, let me just get to it, be right with you momentarily. The first one that I have is Mr. Paul Martinez, a longtime resident of the city of Ballin Park. Mr. Paul Martinez was born on February 14th, 1950, Los Angeles. He was a proud resident of the city of Ballin Park since 1977. Prior to coming to Ballin Park, Mr. Martinez honorably served our country in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War in 1970. Mr. Martinez married the love of his life, Helen Portijo. And earlier, earlier this year, they celebrated their 50th wedding anniversary. Mr. Martinez worked for the U.S. Naval Shipyard and later retired after 30 years with the United States Postal Service. Mr. Martinez passed on April 8th, 2020 due to complications of coronavirus. He survived by his loving wife, Helen, two children, Paul Jr., Inez, son-in-law, Blast, and grandchildren, Michael, and deepest condolences goes out to this person. If you didn't get a glimpse to know who he was, he was featured in the Los Angeles Times for the Dodgers as well as the L.A. Rams. So our deepest condolences goes out to this family. I was part of the, the caravan of vehicles that circled his home on Monterey, Monterey Road, Monterey Street in Ballin Park. So our condolences goes out to the family. The next one is Mrs. Maria Arias. Ms. Maria Arias was a 55-year-old resident of the city of Ballin Park. She's a country kidney donor and passed peacefully at her home at the age of 88 years old. She was surrounded by her children and her grandchildren. She was preceded in death by her husband Jerry Arias. She is a survivor by her, by her seven children, 17 grandchildren, and nine great grandchildren. So our deepest condolences goes out to this family. We also have Mr. Victor Padillas, longtime resident of the city of Ballin Park. I believe was a Vietnam veteran who was also chosen as, as the king and queen, well, the king, at one of our senior citizens events. So longtime resident to participate in the senior citizen group for many years. So our condolences goes out to him as well. Councilmembers wishing to close on anyone? All right. If not, at this point, I'm going to go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I would like to close on behalf of somebody.
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, I'd like to close on behalf of Rose Luna. She passed on April 22nd. She leaves behind Richard Luna, her husband, her children, Rick Richard Luna and Rudy Luna. She was an employee of the school district for many years. She had been ill for, for some time now and we lost her on April 22nd. So my condolences to the Luna family.
Yeah, thank you. One more last one that I had, a gentleman by the name of Rudy Verdugo. So he's a, he passed away on April 28th. It was from a natural causes. Rudy Verdugo was a resident of Ballin Park for over 40 years. He was a president of Lucky Baldwin and he coached Ricky Magdaleno and many, many others. He also coached the first female players to join the Lucky Baldwin. And, and, and she became the first female player to make the All-Star team. The list goes on and on. So our deepest condolences goes out to the Verdugo family as well during this, this time. All right. So at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion, excuse me, the city, I'm going to ask the, the the city clerk, Ms. Jean M. Ayala, if we have anyone information for public communication.
I do.
She does. So at this point, we'll go and open up the public communication. So she will be reading off a notation from an individual. Go ahead. Thank you, resident.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two. The first one reads, "Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Lozano. My name is Ricardo Vasquez, a resident of Ballin Park. I recently learned about layoffs happening for employees of the city, Ballin Park. I'm hoping to know about emergency funds to assist the employees and our residents economically during a disaster such as COVID-19 and any plans to keep the city effectively running. It is very crucial for our leadership to be transparent and residents entrust that you will do what is best for the city. Thank you, Ricardo Vasquez." The next one is submitted by Catherine Loyser, the community librarian manager from the Ballin Park Library. While the library is closed and our in-person programs are canceled until further notice, we hope that you can join us by participating digitally. With your L.A. County Library Card, access free library resources on your computer or your device. Download or stream eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, music, and movies, all without overdue fines. You can also learn a language, get homework help, or take an online class. Need a library card? Sign up for a temporary digital card valid for 90 days to access all of our digital resources at http.lacountylibrary.org website. Have you signed up for our spring and summer discovery program? We've started the program earlier this year and it's all online. So you can participate from home. Log books that you read, write and read reviews, complete online activities, earn points and prizes. We have a discovery program leveled for all ages, adults, teens, kids, and even babies and toddlers. We encourage the whole family to participate. For more information to sign up, also visit the lacountylibrary.org/summer-discovery website. For more information, please call us at 626-962-6947. We are here for all of you during these challenging times. And that's the end of the comments.
Mayor, I actually have an email of, for public comments from Board Member Christina Lucero that I will to you, please. Okay. So this is from Board President of Ballin Park Unified School District Board of Education, Christina Lucero. And it reads, "Mr. Mayor, I want to say that I have been pleased with the few joint projects the city and the Ballin Park Unified School District worked together to provide our community. The COVID-19 testing site at our adult school education campus. The food giveaway at Morgan Park on Friday, May 1st that BPUSD donated food for. Everyone at BPUSD has been grateful for the city volunteers that came to our schools to help out the classified staff, management, cabinet, teachers, board members, and others that are providing food for our community. We have been happy to work together for the benefit of our community. So you can understand how disappointed I was to receive the agenda and read that you placed an item about BPUSD graduation on the city agenda for discussion. On the agenda item, you stated you wanted to discuss the routes that could be closed in preparation for a parade leading up to or after a drive-in graduation. The Department of Public Health, in collaboration with the L.A. County Office of Education, is highly discouraging any type of driving graduation and will provide guidance and acceptable alternatives. To discuss this prematurely without allowing the district to share what is possible to celebrate our students is what saddens me. Not only that, but had you or anyone at the city picked up the phone and contacted the district to confirm plans for celebrating our students, we could have told you to hold off on the agenda item to avoid confusion and disappointment with our students and families. If the district had been asked to be part of a discussion to give feedback as to what we actually would be allowed to do, would have been more of a benefit. The seniors of all three high schools have missed out on an experience and opportunities to share moments of their last years in school together with friends and family. To unnecessarily disappoint our students, their families, and friends regarding one of the most important moments of their lives is not acceptable. We hope that in the future, whenever district business or functions will be discussed such as graduations, the city will inform us ahead of time so that we can appropriately share how we can work together to increase a positive experience for our students and community. And it's signed Christina Lucero, President of the Ballin Park Unified District Board of Education, member of the East San Gabriel Valley ROPTC Board of Education, and a delegate for the California School Board Association. Thank you. That was it.
Okay. First of all, thank you. And I, I will definitely respond to that. And I'll, I will reserve that until the end. It's unfortunate such a statement is being made amidst the COVID-19. Shame on that person, but I'll move on. Okay. So at this point, I note that, that we, I want to go ahead and bring up item 13. So we're going to need a motion to bring that up in the agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and make item 13. Let me get to item 13.
Mayor, this is Shannon Yahtzee. If I could just give a quick update, because I know the city clerk had received some questions also on opening City Hall. So I just wanted to update the public and the city council. As you probably know, L.A. County is ready to issue orders for starting to open up limited businesses starting Friday with some of the car dealers and flower shops and some other retail stores allowing drive-up or takeout. And so we're following those orders closely. And we're going to be preparing and putting into a plan to open up City Hall after the May 15th date. Again, that opening will sort of be a soft opening. Appointment only, limited number of public in at the time, taking all of the precautions that the health department will be recommending, such as the social distancing and the limit numbers of people in the building as, as well as proper protective gear. So I just wanted to give that quick update. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and move back to the reports. I'm going to pull item 13, which is the reports of officers that reads the comprehensive annual financial reports fiscal year 2018 to 2019. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and motion that we bring this as the first item of the day. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Vice Mayor Hernandez. So at this point, Madam City Clerk, we'll go ahead and take roll call.
Councilwoman Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilwoman Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez.
Yes.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So the motion passes four zero to discuss item 13 as the first, the first on the agenda. So at this point, is it Ms. Rolstram that will be handling this?
Mayor, yes, if I could just introduce Rose Tam and Christy Sin Caneta from the consulting firm. They're going to give us the report on the CAFER. This is good budget news for once, but unfortunately, it's last budget year, 2018-19. So I just wanted to preface with that and let them go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, good. Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We completed the audit for fiscal year 2018 and 19. And we are going to bring you some good news about that fiscal year. And I will have our auditor, Kristy from Vazquez, to provide you the PowerPoint presentation now. And feel free to ask us if you have any questions.
Thank you, Rose. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I hope everyone can hear me clearly.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. So good evening, Mayor and City Council Members, and to everyone who are on this call. I hope you are all well and safe amidst this unusual circumstances that we are currently in. My name is Kristy Caneda. I am from Vazquez and Company, the firm that conducted the audit of the city's financial statements and compliance with federal requirements for the year ended June 30, 2019. I will be presenting to you the results of our audit. A copy of the presentation materials was provided to you prior to this meeting. For those of you who are dialing in, I will go through the page number of the materials. We will be sharing as well a copy of the presentation on screen so you can see them in your computer. So I will first discuss the scope of the engagement and then go through the results of the audit, some financial highlights and recommendations, and finally, the required communications to be made to the city council members as the governing body of the city. I will limit my presentation from maybe 10 to 15 minutes and then I will answer any question that you may have, if any, at the end of the presentation. So the scope of the engagement. So we conducted an audit of the financial statements of the city. Along with that goes a single audit, which is in accordance with the uniform guidance because the city receives federal grants over $750,000. As part of our audit, we review the city's compliance with the GAN limit calculation and we issue a separate report on that as well. As part of the engagement, we provide year-round consultation to your accounting department and finance department on financial and accounting matters. At this point, I would like to reiterate that we are independent of the city. As your auditor, we are required to be independent by the professional standards. And this confirms that all, the firm of Vazquez and the members of the team who conducted this audit are independent of the city, the city's employees and management, including the city council members. Next slide, please. There are three levels of assurance that we provide as we conduct the audit of the city. The first one is an audit performed in accordance with general accepted auditing standards. And that is when we report on the city's financial statements. Because the city receives over $750,000 in federal grants, our audit is required to be conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. And that would require Vazquez to issue an opinion on the city's internal control structure and compliance with laws and regulations. That's the second level of assurance. The third level of assurance that we provide is a report on your compliance with a major federal program that we have identified as part of your single audit. And that's, that's the third report that we issue as part of this engagement. Having that in mind, those three levels of assurance, let's go to the results of the audit that we have conducted. Next slide, please. Next slide. Yes, thank you. So the financial statements audit is the first level of assurance. That is when we issue an opinion on the city's financial statements. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on your financial statements saying that the financial statements prepared by management and taken from the information that was provided to the auditor by management are fairly presented and stated reasonable and, and fair. That's the highest level of opinion or, or, or opinion rating that, that an entity can receive from a financial statement auditor. In as far as the city's internal control over financial reporting is concerned, that's the second level of assurance. We noted a couple of internal control matters. The first one is the city's controls over time review and capitalization of capital projects. And the second one is the city's controls over review of contracts and agreements that have financial reporting impact. I will provide more details of those two matters as we go along to the related slide when we get to the recommendations and, and suggested improvements over the city's financial reporting system. The last level of assurance is the opinion that we provide in as far as the city's compliance with the single audit. Next slide, please. We have identified a couple of major programs during the fiscal year 2019. The first one is Section 8 housing choice vouchers, for which the city spent 4.8 million during the fiscal year. The second major program is the equitable sharing program. And the city spent $246,000 on this program during the fiscal year. The total of those two programs represent 81% of total federal expenditures of $62.2 million reported during the fiscal year. And that's a very high coverage. And I would like to report that we noted no findings as a result of our audit. Moreover, the city continues to be classified as a low-risk audit based on federally prescribed criteria. What it is, is we are required to assess the city as an oddity. That means we noted no significant findings during the audit of the city's compliance with federal requirements during the last three years. That includes the fiscal year 2019. And that's a good thing for, for the city. Next, next slide, please. Before I go to the required communication and the recommendations, I would like to mention a few financial reporting highlights. These information are in your comprehensive annual financial report. However, I would like to highlight certain items. The first item is that the city's overall net position decreased by $5 million during the year from 71.7 million last year to 66.7 million as of the end of the fiscal year 2019. And that is because of higher government-wide expenses than revenues reported in 2019. I would just like to mention though that this reporting, the government-wide financial reporting is based on full accrual basis of accounting, which is a basis of accounting that is different from the basis used to prepare the city's annual budget. The decrease as well was because of higher pension and OPEB expense. The city issued bonds during the year that resulted in reporting of bond issuance costs. That decrease of $5 million was however, an improvement from a decrease in net position of $10 million reported in 2018. So that's an improvement as well. All citywide revenues increased by 5.2 million. The citywide expenses decreased by 342,000 during the fiscal year as well. At the government fund level, and this is more consistent with the way the city prepares the budget, the governmental fund expenditures was 56.5 million. That is a $5 million decrease from the 61.4 million reported during the fiscal year 2018. The city's net pension liability was 54 million as of the end of 2019. And that is an increase of approximately $500,000 from last year's 53.5 million. OPEB liability was 47 million, and that's an increase of $4 million from the prior years, 42.8 million. It should be noted that the settlement of unfunded pension liability made during the fiscal year has not yet been included in the June 30, 2019 CalPERS report. So those will be reflected in your 2020 comprehensive annual financial report. Next slide, please. The city's general funds, fund balance increased by 1.3 million during the year. If you can recall, the city budgeted a general fund budget deficit of 883,000. So the net revenue surplus of 1.3 million was a good result as compared to the projected general fund budget deficit of 883,000. As of June 30, 2019, the city's general fund, fund balance of 30 million consists of non-spendable fund balance of 14.1 million. Committed and assigned fund balance was 9.8 million. And the unassigned fund balance was 6.1 million. So that's what comprised the total 30, 30 million in general fund, fund balances of the end of the year. The general funds unassigned fund balance of 6.1 million represent 20% of total general fund expenditures or equivalent to two months of general funds operating expenditures. So that means you have a reserve of two months' worth of general funds operating expenses. Next slide, please. This slide shows how your general fund reserve and unassigned fund balance increases from year to year. As of the end of the fiscal year 2019, the city has 9.4 million in total general fund reserve and unassigned fund balance. This consists of 6.1 million of your unassigned fund balance and 3.3 million reserve for budget stabilization funds. So that's, that's the spendable portion of your general fund, fund balance. Next slide, please. These are our comments and recommendations. And we have, I have mentioned in, in an earlier slide that we noted a couple of internal control matters that we are developing some recommendations to address them. The first one would be monitoring of construction in progress and post-completion evaluation of major capital projects. This arises based on the results of our audit. We noted that there, there are certain construction in progress that the city incurred in the fiscal year 2018, but were not capitalized until the fiscal year 2019. The second item is timely review of contracts and agreements to evaluate impact on financial reporting. This resulted as well in, our audit resulted in prior period adjustment that requires the city to report certain agreements that resulted in a 7.4 million notes receivable that was not reported in 2019. However, the city was able to catch up with the recording of that notes receivable and reported them in, in 2019. The third item, which is a monthly and year-end financial reporting process, is somehow related to items number one and two. We are recommending for the city to establish a process to ensure all accounts are reconciled timely and that all transactions are captured timely in the city's financial reporting system. These internal control matters, however, do not involve say, lost resources or improper use of resources. They are more of administrative in, in nature. And partly as a result or due to turnover in accounting personnel that happened. And partly as a result or, uh, due to, uh, turnover in accounting personnel that happened towards the end of the fiscal year or during the year-end financial reporting. Next slide, please. Um, these are the status of our prior year, uh, recommendation. Um, item one has been discussed in the previous slide. Uh, our recommendation for the city to conduct an inventory of its capital asset, uh, was implemented during the fiscal year. In the next slide, shows the, um, required communication. As your independent auditor, we are required by professional standard to communicate certain items to you. And the first item is the responsibility of the management. Um, I would like to reiterate that management owns the financial statements. The information from which the cover was compiled from was provided by management. And they are responsible for those financial information. Uh, we, uh, at VASCA, as your auditors, our responsibility is to review and audit those information and render an opinion as to the reasonableness of those information in as far as how they are presented in, in the compiled financial statement. We are not aware of any consultations by management with other accountants about accounting and auditing matters. We call this um, opinion shopping. Um, had there been any consultation, we are required to communicate those to you, but, uh, there was none. We did not encounter any difficulties with management nor disagreements with management. Uh, we did not encounter as well. As part of our, uh, audit procedure, we reviewed the city's significant accounting policies, um, including accounting estimates, and we determined that they are appropriate and were consistently. No significant or unusual transactions or accounting policies, uh, for which there is lack of, uh, guidance or consensus were identified. As I've mentioned in the previous slide, uh, we have reviewed all the accounting policies adopted by, by the city and we uh, determined that they are, um, appropriate. As a result of our audit, we proposed a few adjustments to management and management has agreed to record all those uh, proposed adjustments that actually includes a couple of adjustments that we have identified uh, because of the matter that, uh, we noted on capital assets and, and, uh, review of contracts and agreements. Um, no significant issues were discussed or subject to correspondence with management prior to retention. And this is very, very important as we, as your auditors, uh, is required to, uh, maintain our independence from the city. We noted no, um, irregularities, fraud or illegal acts during the result of, during the, uh, the audit process. I would just like to, to mention though that, uh, we performed a financial audit for the city. And the financial statement audit is not a fraud audit. Um, however, as part of, of the audit process, we are required to interview members of the city's management, including, um, um, employees as well and under certain circumstances, members of of the board or the city council members to identify higher risk area or any, uh, fraud risk factors that we want to consider, um, or which we should focus our attention on as part of our audit. Um, and as a result of the process, um, we noted no, uh, irregularities or, or allegations of fraud. Uh, the city, we, we, our audit, in the process of our audit, we rely on the information provide, being provided to us by the city. And that includes all the information coming from the books of accounts, supporting documents that we review. And it is for that reason that the city is required to provide us with a signed copy of management representation letter to confirm, um, their responsibility over the information provided to us and to attest that the information and documents provided to us as your auditors are, are true and, and correct. And the city provided us that signed representation letter when we issued, uh, the auditor's opinion. The last slide, please. This slide is regarding your accounting pronouncement. I'm not going to discuss in so much detail. This is just for your information. Uh, the, the big thing that's coming up in as far as financial reporting is concerned is GASP eighty-seven, which is leases that will take effect for the city. It's going to be for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Um, and then the rest of the new accounting standards may or may not impact the city's view for financial reporting. That ends my presentation. Um, I will try to answer any question that you may have at this point.
Oh, council members have any questions?
No questions.
No questions? All right. At this point, I want to thank you very much for, for providing us with this report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So ma- mayor, we would ask for a motion to receive and file the report.
All right. So at this point, I'd go ahead and, uh, make a motion to receive and file. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's second by, by, uh, Avila. Thank you very much. At this point, Madam City Clerk will take roll call.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Lozano?
Yes. Okay. The motion passes four zero. All right. So at this point, we'll go ahead and, uh, just the, uh, with seven o'clock, one moment, please. Seven o'clock, one. Seven o'clock agenda, one moment.
Proclamations.
Yeah, let me go ahead and, uh, uh, go into the proclamation that we have. Thank you, Councilmember Alejandro Avila. Okay. The first one is the lupus awareness month, uh, May twenty, uh, twenty twenty. Um, that, uh, excuse me, uh, commonly known as lupus is an, an acute chronic complex and often threatening, uh, disease. And it has, uh, estimated that, that more than one point five million Americans, uh, live with some form of lupus. Lupus strikes women of, uh, child, childbearing age, and it is affects all aspect of their lives. Early diagnosis and proper treatment are, are critical to the important improvements of the quality of life survival rates of people with lupus. Increased public awareness, education and research are key wings to the battle against lupus. So now therefore I, uh, Manuel Lozano, along with the city council, uh, declare this uh, May twentieth as lupus awareness month. Very, very important. We have excellent, uh, excellent individuals that, uh, are well educate our, our community very thoroughly, um, on those, uh, on that, on lupus. All right. The next one that we have is the mental health awareness month, uh, May twentieth. Um, the mental health and well-being of people in the United States is a vital issue that affects not only quality of life, but also the health, the, the health of communities, families and economic stability. It is important to acknowledge the contribution older individuals have made to economic well-being in our communities and the workplace through civic leadership and, and, and mentoring. And an estimate of ten point four million adults in the United States experience conditions such as schizophrenia and bipolar disorder and major depression and do receive, uh, treatment for illness. And recovery-oriented interventions such as the supported employment, uh, supported housing and, and supported education have been shown to improve outcomes. The faith community may have provide vital, uh, links in, in ministry and serving individuals and families in need of mental health service. And Kaiser Permanente Educational Outreach Program and looms of lupus, uh, strive to educate, increase public awareness. Individuals are connected to peer support services are better connected to their community and the service they offer. So, um, now therefore I, Manuel Lozano, along with the city council, declare May twentieth as mental health awareness month. That is a very extremely, uh, important, uh, a- a- aspect of, uh, uh, the mental health because it not, it does not discriminate and, uh, every, uh, facet of our, uh, it's a great, uh, thank you for that. All right. So at this point, we're going to go into the agenda. So we have, uh, consent calendar, items one, uh, one through, uh, actually one through, one through twelve. Any council member wishing to pull any items?
Yes, I'd like to pull, pull item ten and twelve for discussion, please.
Then ten and twelve. All right. At this point, yes, council member Monica Garcia?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to pull item number five.
It's number five. Very good. Okay. All right. So at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, move the consent calendar with the exception of item number five and, uh, five, ten, eleven. That's my motion.
Five, ten and twelve.
Yes, five, ten, oh, five, five, ten and, oh, twelve.
Twelve, not eleven.
The correction. Councilmember Avila. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, my Avila. Any objections? At this point, we'll have Madam City Clerk take roll call.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Lozano?
Yes. Good. The motion passes, uh, four zero. All right. The first item is a number five requested by council member Garcia. Approval of the contract with rank associates to provide consulting services to update downtown, uh, TOD, specific plan and related documents. Councilmember?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I'd like to continue this item and also let you know if, uh, you're interested in a presentation to contact Ben Martinez, our community development director. Um, I've, I've asked for a presentation so that I can really understand on this project more and, uh, before we approve it. So I'd like to, my, my motion is to continue the item.
I'll go ahead and second. Any objections? Seeing that at this point, we'll have roll call by Madam City Clerk Gina Yala.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hernandez? Mayor Protem Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes. Okay. The motion passes four, four zero. All right. So the, uh, next item that we have, item ten, which is the, also by Councilmember A- Avila, which is the approved and request for service of RFS proposal from the city on the Onco-Cooperating Infrastructure Engineering, Inc., uh, for, for civil and landscape design services, including project management and administration for the Big Delta and Water, well, renewable projects. Uh, this comes from Avila.
Thank you, mayor. I just have a few questions. Uh, I'm just curious. Do you know, um, how many bike repair stations we will have? That's one of my questions. Uh, also, how many access points and whereabouts there'll be? And will there be any decorative stone around the area? And do we have a design, uh, for this yet that we can look at?
Uh, hi. Good evening, Councilmember Avila. This is Sam. Um, I can respond. Hi. Um, so the final number of the bike repair stations has not been determined. Uh, this is, um, this is the, the RFS is for the commencement of the design services. So a lot of that will start and we'll meet and, uh, talk about that. Uh, in terms of access points, uh, yeah, we're going to have, uh, access points at all major crossings along, along the, um, along the wash. Uh, so there'll be, uh, access there. But, uh, most of the, um, design work is, is extremely preliminary at this point. And after we commence the design services, we'll have a better idea of where we're going.
Okay. That was, those were all my questions on that. Thank you, Sam. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and, and not at this point, we'll have Madam City Clerk, Yala, take a look.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia? Councilmember Garcia? Councilmember Garcia? Mayor Protem Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes. Okay. The motion, uh, this point passes, uh, three, um, three, two. Uh, so we may have lost, uh, Councilmember Garcia there momentarily because of the, uh, connection here. So we'll go ahead and move on to the next one, which is, uh, item, uh, eleven by, you know, which
Twelve.
Oh, excuse me. Approval of the police department's, uh, uh, reorganization, which entails the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty dash zero nineteen to update the city of Bonparr's job classification plan and adopting the resolution number twenty twenty. Many of the city involved in park, uh, pay schedule as accordance with the CalPERS established, uh, guidelines and approving their reclassification of lieutenant positions and evaking captain position to the newly positioned police commanders. That's what, Councilmember Avila.
Thank you, mayor, for that. Uh, first of all, I want to start, we're, we're thanking our police department. They are providing excellent service to our community. Uh, we all seem to, and we feel very safe out there. I, I see them all, all over. I see how they're providing service to the community by, by taking, uh, the birthday parties to, to the residents that are not able to get out and celebrate. So I appreciate everything that our police department is doing. So I want to thank you for that. Um, and so to continue with this, also, I want to thank the chief because last meeting, I had a lot of questions. And I did get a lengthy, and I know the rest of you received it, a lengthy document with, uh, with the responses. So thank you, chief. Um, but I do have additional questions to that. So chief, are you there? Chief? Is the chief on?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Just had to find my.
Okay. I want to make sure you're, you're hearing me. Okay. The first question. So I'm, um, again, thank you for the information. So on the information that you sent me, you stated that we have one full status lieutenant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So my question, how many lieutenant positions do we have in PD? And how many are not filled at this time?
We've got a total of four. Three are unfilled.
We have a total of four and three are unfilled. Okay. Because maybe I missed something because when I looked at the department organizational chart, uh, I only saw three. I saw the day watch lieutenant, night watch lieutenant and professional standards lieutenant. What am I missing that it's not on here? Which lieutenant is missing?
That's would be an admin lieutenant.
So that's not listed on the reorganization or chart that's currently being used. So that's an administration lieutenant, you said?
Yes, correct.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Now, my next question, I know we're talking about, uh, people accruing overtime. So the next question is for those lieutenants that we have on staff for the last eighteen months, and I'm sure you're going to have to go back and research this. Please give me, uh, the amount-based pay for each lieutenant and the amount of overtime for each lieutenant for the past eighteen months. So if you can research that for me. And also, if you can please explain specifically in detail how much of the lieutenant overtime will be saved by this reorganization in the next fiscal year. And by that, I mean, what events are they attending? Uh, what assignments did the lieutenants have to do to accrue this overtime? How much will be saved from that? And how many hours of overtime overall will we be saving? So that was my next question. And then my next question is, since you, you will now have commanders. And I think you answered that, but I want to double check it. What process will you use to transition the lieutenants to commanders? I would, um, I personally would like all the commander positions to try to be filled in-house first. So the question is, will you interview the in-house applicants first before moving on to the outside applicants? That's another question. And then another question I have. How many acting captains do we have and how many are permanent? And I also need to know their pay at this time. So that, if you can research it. And I said, I have the pay schedule, but I just want to make sure what, where they fall at when you give me that. And then the next question is, how many police officers do we have? And how many police officer positions still need to be filled at this time? And then I know that in the new reorganization, you, um, there's corporals. And you mentioned that we already have corporals in place, but they're not being used. And they get an extra three hundred dollars a month. So since they're not being used, are they still getting those three hundred dollars extra a month? Because I don't see them listed anywhere here. So those are my questions. And also, so I was looking at the lieutenant pay schedule, and then I'm also looking at the report, at the staff report. And looking at the staff report, it looks like when we go from a lieutenant to a commander, each commander will receive over ten thousand dollars increase in pay yearly. That's actually more than ten percent increase. So I'm sure by that increase, our CalPERS costs will definitely go up. And then the other thing that's concerning, I know that, uh, our officers can retire at the age of fifty. So another concern of that of mine is once they retire, we have a lot of them that are pretty close to retiring. They're going to receive ninety percent of their retirement for at least thirty years. I mean, we don't know how long they'll be with us, but I'm saying about thirty years to the age of eighty. So that's a lot of money there. Another thing, um, you say by this reorganization, we're saving Another thing, you say by this reorganization, we're saving overtime. We're saving money in overtime because we're accruing a lot of overtime. However, you have control of the overtime. You can deny that overtime so that we don't have to accrue overtime pay. Now, if you think about it, once we put these commanders in, in place, this is a fixed salary. We cannot change that. That is fixed, and that has to be paid on a monthly yearly basis. The overtime, we control. We don't have to pay that out because we don't have to give the overtime. So look at that. That's very, very concerning as well. Because here we are, asking all the departments that we need to cut because we're in a three million dollar deficit in our city. So we're asking for a ten to nineteen percent cut in our budget. The staff is looking at everything to cut programs, to cut, well, cut staff, not necessarily. We're just looking at everything. But looking at this reorganization, our lieutenants, which we have four, and now we're gonna go to five lieutenants, that's an extra lieutenant. Like I said, they're getting a ten percent increase in pay. At this time, people are losing jobs. These are very, very difficult times. And Rose, a question for you. Because there will be an increase if we get these commanders in pay. They're gonna, on payroll, they're gonna get an increase in pay. Can you tell me, if you don't have the answer now, get back to me later, what would the increase in CalPERS be for these commanders? Because I'm sure that's going to increase as well. And the increase, that's going to increase retirement. So we need to look at everything. Again, I am not against saving the city money. By all means, we need it. We're three million dollar in a deficit. But we need to look at everything, and right now, the economy is really bad. We need to come back. My, I'd like to make a motion to come back with this once the economy is stable, because like I said, this is giving our police department, not everybody, certain people, a ten percent, more than a ten percent increase in pay. And I'm not okay with that. We don't have the money to start giving people ten percent increase. When we may possibly be laying off people, we may possibly be cutting pay in people. I don't think it's fair that a certain small group of people will be getting more than a ten percent increase in pay. And now we're gonna have a bigger liability for CalPERS. So Chief, if you can get those answers for me. Rose, if you can give me what the increase in CalPERS would be for these commanders. And again, with that, thank, I do like to thank the police department again. But I really like to make a motion to postpone this and come back to this when the economy is more stable, and that is my motion. Thank you.
One, another, both on the floor. Okay, the motion dies for a second. Let me make a comment also with the, with the. Now, the, the CalPERS has changed. The officers are now at three at fifty-five, not at three at fifty. Am I correct on that, Shannon? There was a change.
So it depends. Officers that were hired before the pepper changes are still considered classic, and they're still at the three percent at fifty. Newer officers, which now comprise about one-third of the staff, are at the lower, the lower threshold of retirement.
Okay, now, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor, go ahead.
And I just want to also say, now, moving over from the current status to having an assistant chief and to having commanders. Now, we, this would definitely save a multitude of money. We leave it as is. Right now, there's gonna be major, major overtime that will be incurred. All those commanders will be on salary. Those will be astronomical compared to the way it is at this point. Lieutenants make major overtime. So we need to also look at, look at that, the long, the long-term effects on the, on the city of Ballpark as well. And I think that's very important for us.
So to that point, Mayor, sorry to interrupt you, that point that you're making major overtime, again, that's why I'm asking also, how many police officers do we have at this time? And how many more need to be filled? Because it's my understanding and past reports, the reason they're doing overtime is because we're understaffed. And again, like I said, the overtime can be controlled. We have control over that to make sure people are not doing overtime. Again, once the commanders are put in place, we have no control over that. That is a set pay schedule that we have to pay. The overtime is not. I'm just asking to let, let's look at this further. These are tough times, and the economy is really bad, and there is no savings. If you're giving somebody a ten percent increase in pay, they're going from lieutenant to commander. I don't see how that's any savings and how fair it is to the rest of our staff in our city that are possibly getting cuts or laid off. Or we don't even know yet exactly what, what we can do to save our staff and to make sure that we're still providing our community everything that we need. I'm just saying, let, let's hold off on this. What's the hurry? Let's hold off on it. Let's look exactly what the commanders are gonna be looking at for retirement. I asked Rose to look it up for me right now. Let's wait and see and make sure we have all our eyes, our eyes dotted and our Ts crossed before we make a decision. Again, very tough times. I, I am not happy with having to give somebody more than a ten percent increase in pay when the rest of the community and the rest of our staff are suffering. And that's why I made the motion to hold off on this and bring it back until we have more information and see where we're at and where we're gonna have to cut.
Okay, let me just, hold on, allow me to correct myself real quick before I give it over to Vice Mayor. The, the, the new retirement system for police officers, let me, allow me to correct myself. I was wrong. I was looking at my notes. It said two point seven at fifty-seven. So it's a major change from what it was at one time, three at fifty, so.
Yep.
Yes.
We're looking at people that already have been here that may not be at that point. So that's why I need Rose to look at that, because not everybody falls under that. And if we have people moving from lieutenant to commander, that means they have years of experience. And we need to look at all that. How is it affecting us? There's nothing wrong with holding back and making sure that our numbers are correct, Mayor. What is the hurry and what is the rush?
Well, hold on. And your, your statements are well taken. I just want to make sure that we're corrected in that, in that area. So at this point, I'm gonna give it to Vice Mayor Hernandez.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments from, from both the parties here. You know, the one thing that we also have to be mindful is the way the overtime is being dished out. You know, one of the reasons for why I support the reorganization of the, of the department is it reduces the overtime impact to the overall budget of the department. Not necessarily one person or the other, but it does flatten the overall process of the department. Yes, the individuals, as Councilmember Aga has stated, is, you know, the, those folks would be going from an hourly rate to a, you know, to a salary rate. The chief has, has mentioned in the past that he would be using those folks to help cover the positions that normally, and the roles that normally the lieutenants would be covering on an overtime position. Those folks will now be covering on a straight salary. So overtime, that will sell, that will save us money. One of the reasons for, also for the org chart, besides just the cost savings, is it provides, you know, a greater accountability across all sections of the department. So with that, I'd like to make a motion, you know, similar to, as Councilmember Alejandro Abba has stated, is we are in tough times. That's why, you know, I would like to ensure that we approve item twelve with the amendment that we defer the assistant chief position for six months to obtain additional budget salary savings. So what that essentially means is, come July, excuse me, come January one, two thousand twenty-one, most likely at that time, the chief will then be able to answer, it will, excuse me, will be able to hire, you know, the assistant chief and give us some cost savings as we're moving forward in this uncertain times. And that also means, you know, regardless of what, of what we're doing now with the department, you know, there are no sacred cows, and everyone across all departments will be looking at for cost savings and efficiencies across the board, and that is my motion.
If I may, Mayor, we have to look at the fact that.
There's a motion, sir. Mr. Mayor, there's a motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
I still have a comment, and when I made the motion, you didn't allow me to finish, so please let me finish, then we'll continue. So, as you know, as you know, all the events are being canceled. So there is no need for the police department to accrue overtime.
Alejandro, without.
There is no need to hurry on this.
Please stop. There's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor. And I'll go ahead and, the motion is by Councilmember Hernandez. I'll go ahead and second. Are there any objections?
Objection.
There's one objection, so at this point, Madam City Clerk will take roll call, and we'll allow the Councilmember Alejandro Abba to speak thereafter. All right, so at this point, Councilmember.
Mayor Prochan Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
No, and for the record, I just feel that this needs to be looked into further. We are not going to accrue any overtime because all the events have been canceled. So this can wait. The economy is bad. Everybody's suffering. You should just wait until this COVID situation is over so we can look at this further. So, no.
Right, thank you, Councilmembers. So the motion passes three, three one. We'll go ahead and go to the, which is the council communication and discussion. The first one that I have, and I'll read it out, discussion and direction to and organizing, accommodating, and drive-through graduation ceremony. This will include a car parade on Ballpark Boulevard from traveling south from John, John Beach Street to Ramona Boulevard. In addition, it will signage for all three high schools, senior class photos to be placed separately for the Ballpark High School and Servicestah High School and North Park. Well, let me, first of all, just say, I, I spoke to Board Member Robert Varela, retired teacher of over a couple of years, and who, from LA, of course, and also from Servicestah where he retired. I just brought this idea up. Now, we obviously know that we've all been out in the community. I've had literally hundreds of students and parents ask me, Mayor, what is the city going to do for the kids? Graduation comes. We obviously know, this is, this is going to be a group of youth that will not experience the prom and that will not experience the beautiful and awesome graduation ceremonies that are held by the school board members. And I admire each and every one of them for what they do. So, and it's important for us to recognize. So what I decided, just told myself, is let's work together with the school board members. I mean, yes, this is their, their, their particular area, not the cities. This is the reason I placed it on here, is I think it should be a joint venture of Will Assist, Accommodate with the Streets. But from, from the information that I would gather from Varela this afternoon, of course, they have, they, they have to respond to the, the ed code. So there may be particular circumstances that may, may not permit that. But I think that we, we owe it to these students, and hopefully, the, the school board members can look at this to see what we can do. It's important. It's important for all of us to be able to celebrate the special day for all, for all these individuals here. And again, we need to work together, and that has been our, 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 our process, and we've been doing good. And we don't want to divert from that. And that's, that's, this is, this is what the goal and objective was here, is to, to offer this and to work together because of this graduation. I mean, it's just very disappointing to a lot of students, and that's, that's what I meant by saying that. So just wanted all the council members. So we could maybe set up some type of meeting and see what we can do. And I think they have to check, I forget the name of that, the acronym of the, the ed code where they have to get further information, and I understand about the kids jumping out of the vehicles and going out. But, so, we'll see, we'll, we'll see what, what we could work on there with them. So that's all I have to say in that area.
So Mayor, maybe we can have staff contact the school district. It's Laco that they have, they get direction from in order, and they're keeping them updated on a daily basis of what they can and cannot do. So maybe have staff contact them so that they can give them the latest updates from Laco because they, they have to abide by that, so.
And thank you, Alejandro. Let, let me just say something. I acknowledge Vice Mayor Hernandez, Councilmember Avila, Councilmember Pacheco, and Councilmember Garcia. We all may have differences of opinion. I understand that. I mean, the school board members, the water board members, this is a time when we all need to work together, and this is what it is. We need to, we need to celebrate these youth because it's going to go on for generations as they grow up, adults, or become parents and so on and so forth. And they're gonna be looking back at twenty twenty, where there was no prom, there was no graduation. And that's all, that's all I mean. And, and I mentioned every one of my colleagues' names because each and every one of us have been very active throughout the community, along with all the staff and, and the chief out there with the birthday presentations by the police department. It's all of us together. When I'm out there, I represent the entire city council and everyone. So it's not crediting myself, it's crediting ourselves because we're going through tough times. And you know, it's amazing, sitting here as long as I've been here, this is a very historical time that we will remember for, for decades to come. I mean, I get up in the morning sometimes, and, and I think it's, 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 it's a bad dream, especially going to my work where you have to be like fully masked. And it's, it's, it's literally changed our, our living way. And I think that the mask that we wear to this day will continue on. And I just want to say that. But let me also finish up by saying that it, it's obvious due to the fact that the, that the, the budget is affected. We're not going to have the Fourth of July celebration at Servicestah. We're not going to have our concerts. We're not gonna have a parade. But one thing that I will ask, that we need to look at, I've had several, several parents ask me if, in fact, we're gonna be canceling, because again, this is our decision here now. And I, it said this to a couple of the residents that would be discussed with us. We need to look at if, in fact, we're, we're not going to have those celebration concerts in the Fourth of July. Are we going to sell fireworks, or are we canceling that as well? Because that also brings people together. So I just wanted to see what decision are we gonna make? Now, real quick, before I open it up, the mayor of Azusa has been following Ballpark on, on the, on the whether or not we're gonna have the Fourth of July. They, I told them we were gonna discuss it today, because it looks like they're probably not gonna have it, and other cities are following the same suit. That's, that's all I want to say.
And Mayor, I just want to add, everybody has been working well together. The, the school district, the city, everybody, all our staff has been amazing, our police department, our residents. We're all working together to fight this COVID, so it doesn't get worse in our community. But you know, I, I do understand the district. I am a school district employee, so I, I do know how strict their guidelines are and how anything we say can affect our students because they, they take everything deep. And, and we have to be very careful, because like you said, they're missing out on so many things that is beyond our control at this time and beyond the school district control. So we, we do need to be very careful when we mention things to make sure that it is something that Laco is allowing us to do, and it's not gonna come back at us or the school district. But I, I do want to commend the school district. They're doing a wonderful job, working with all of us and working with our students to make sure that they're, they're getting the best, doing the best that they can with this COVID outbreak. And again, we're working together, which is the best part. Thank you.
Absolutely. Before I forget, thank you, Alejandro, for those words. Want to also recognize, because they're part of the team, and I just plumb forgot, our city treasurer, Maria Contreras, and our, and our city clerk, Gina Yala, as well. So the, the part of the big team.
Mayor? I, I definitely support the idea of putting the photos and the names on the billboards. I think that would be a really nice gesture, and you know, those are our billboards in working with a private company. So I think that that is very doable. As far as the, you know, the other activities, I do agree that we should be in communication with the school district and, and listen to what Laco is advising with regard to these types of, of events. And I hear what you're saying, and I know that you want to be, you know, responsive to the students right now. I mean, it's such an important time in their life. And it's so sad that we're experiencing this, you know, outbreak, and, and that's gonna be possibly taken away from them. But I do think that, given, you know, the circumstances and the unique set of circumstances, I do think that it would be wise for us to, not only, you know, to jointly collaborate, communicate with the school district, but also to, you know, take heed of what Laco is advising because it's, it's not just for Ballpark, but it's for school districts across LA County. So that's my two cents, but I do, I do definitely think that we, you know, we should post those names and photos on the billboards at the very least. names and photos on the billboards at the very least.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Uh, at this point, any, anyone else wish to say? Oh, a couple of things I wanna say before I forget. Um, Shannon, or Public Works Sam, uh, residents are finding a lot of masks tossed out, gloves and all that. I mean, it's the, a, a new era, of course, with the ma- the face mask. So we could maybe dash cans, additional ones out there. I don't know what areas. I'll have to check with this resident. Uh, second, I know that the governor is looking at uh opening up a specific uh uh, um, uh entities or companies on, on Friday. Restaurants are asking, when are they? Are they due on the fifteenth? Is that what we're talking about? The car wash across the street is asking when they're gonna be opening up. So, as well. Do we have anything else or we?
We, we do have information on the opening of the businesses. Um, there is detailed information that just came out. I will be forwarding you more information tomorrow. I'm also gonna be having staff passing it out to the appropriate businesses. And I do, I do believe it addresses allowing um car washes to open. Um, I don't have all the details in front of me, but I will get that to you. Um, but they have uh phases. Um, they're calling what we're in now is, is stage one. So stage two will take effect Friday. Off the top of my head, I recall that it uh allows flower shops, um, car dealers, uh, some retail stores for sort of a takeout um purchase. And then there's um, a stage three, but I'll have to get that to everybody and we will be getting that out to the businesses right away.
Yeah, and also, I, I, I know that the business, Business Association, why don't you make sure that they reach out or uh, on some of these loans, I don't know how many have applied, how many have at all. I, I, by understanding, I guess those go pretty quick, but um, you know, there's a lot of businesses out there that have been closed and hopefully someone, hopefully a good portion are able to
Good point, Mayor. Yes, the Business Association, can we find out, I don't know if this is a Ben's question, find out how long, I know they applied for grants. Um, I don't know if that's the correct thing they're applying for, but how long does it take for them to get a response? If you can get that information now, put it on our website maybe then. And before we finish, uh, Mayor, I really wanna thank all of our staff, all of our essential workers that have been out there working the COVID uh testing area. They are working non-stop and that's Parks and Recreation is what I see a lot. I wanna thank all the staff that was out at that food drive. It was amazing, was it not? And there was so many people out there. Mike Salas was there, Manicarrillo. I saw Sam. I saw all the council members there. Uh, it's amazing how we're all pulling together to help our community and make sure that they have the resources that they need. But thank you, Parks and Recreation. You have been out there. You have been the, the forefront of, of this outbreak because you have been out there working, doing the essential work, disinfecting our police department cars, disinfecting all the offices, making sure everything is safe for us. And thank you again to the police department and everybody there working for us. I, I appreciate everything that you are doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, council members, have anything else?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, again, I just wanna thank uh not only all the staff and the team that were, that was out there last week, last Friday during the food giveaway. Uh, you know, we provided uh, you know, close to a little over three thousand one hundred and thirty-six boxes of uh, of meals to to, to our community and, and our neighbors here in San Gare Valley. Um, in addition to that, I certainly wanna make sure we thank uh all the volunteers because we had uh several volunteers that came in uh on their free time. Uh, you know, one example is the Valley County Water District. Uh, all the staff that was there were all ca- uh, all on their, on their own, on their own free will and their own time. Along with, you know, all their union folks that helped us, you know, coordinate and organize this uh with our grocery unions, the LA County Fed, um, and, you know, many, many more to, to be able to list here. Uh, but it's just shows, you know, that during tou- tough times, uh, you know, it shows the strength of our community and of, and of our, of our neighbors and friends uh that come out uh to help during this, during these times. Uh, you know, an example is the local churches that are continuing to feed uh our neighbors um during this period of time. And they're doing it with, you know, with very little resources uh on their own, but they're still doing, you know, as much as they can and as most, and as much as they can uh, you know, on a week-to-week basis. So again, I just wanna thank, you know, our local churches, our nonprofit groups that are, that are listening today. And of course, uh, all the volunteers that came out uh last Friday to uh help assist in uh, you know, feeding our community and, and our region. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I did find um the document I just received from the county. I can go over that stage one real quick if you'd like. Um, May eighth, they're allowing florists, toy stores, music stores, bookstores, clothing stores, sporting goods for curbside pickup with adherence to social distancing and infection protocol. Car dealerships with the same um requirements. And then also part of um part of all s- stage two is also, the date is still to do, to be determined. Um, but it's allowing all retail stores to open up for curbside pickup, indoor shopping malls um with those, some limits on maximum occupancy. Um, car washes opening with adherence to social distancing. Um, manufacturing, personal grooming, including hair salons, barbers, nail salons at limited occupancy, gyms, fitness centers by limited occupancy. Um, and then also restaurants, in-person dining at restaurants, reopens at limited occupancy, along with takeout options. Um, as well as um some offices, bars, nightclubs that do not re- to, to remain closed will be bars, nightclubs that do not serve food, massage parlors, body art shops, et cetera. So yes, within a few days, we should have all of that information on um the um restaurants and that type of thing. But things seem to be moving along quite well.
That's really good. Um, so I think we probably have to come up with a plan on how we're gonna monitor to make sure that, that's gonna be a lot of work to monitor to make sure they're following the distance. Very interesting. It's going to be interesting.
Alrighty, thank you very much, Alejandro. Anyone else?
And I, I will forward that to everybody's email shortly.
Thank you, Shannon.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mike.
I, I also wanna make sure that uh we send our happy wishes and best wishes to uh Councilmember Alejandra Abila on her uh recent birthday. So congrats and cheers.
Thank you. You're not singing to me?
Absolutely, ready?
I'm just kidding.
No, we'll do this. We're doing this.
Birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday dear Alejandro. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Thank you. What was that? Thank you.
Hello?
Yes?
A police chief. Is he on the line?
Yes, sir.
He's there, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor.
Big favor, can you go roll by Alejandro's house tomorrow? Do a little sermon.
No, 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 no. Don't do that, please. I appreciate it.
Sure we can come up with something. All right.
Let me just say, people are commenting on, on, on how unique that is because people can't be out there partying at the parks and so on and so forth. But you, you guys are providing, so just thank the police department. Uh, it, it, it is, it is phenomenal and the amount of, of compliments are incredible. And um, so, so wanna thank you very much as well. And also, uh, also recognize that this is teachers' uh, uh, week, I believe, right? So
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Gina Yala.
Alright, so at this point, no further questions. I'll go ahead and move for German. That's my motion. Second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor. Any objections? See none. So move at this point. Have a good evening and viva Ballpark and let's stay strong, people. Take care.
Viva Ballpark.
Ballpark, brother. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night.